Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us this evening. I appreciate you attending the City Council Meeting Minute and the City Council Meeting and Public Hearing for September 8th, 2025. I'll go ahead and note for the record that new business item G on your printed agenda for True North 400 Community Improvement District Expansion has been deferred until September 22nd. That council meeting will cover that item, so if you were here for that item, you may have saved yourself a little bit of time now. I'll note for the record that all members of council are present and accounted for at this time, and as always, we begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance, so if you're willing and able, please stand and join us.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first part of our meeting here will be work session items. For those of you who aren't familiar, these are not items we'll be voting on this evening. These are just items that need to have a discussion from city council, and since we're not allowed to meet in quorum without public, I mean, being here to visit and see what's taking place and participate, I just wanted to let you know that we're not going to be voting on these items. These are just opportunities for our council to have a discussion together in public to help give direction to our staff and other opportunities. That being said, the first item under work session is Cultural Arts Commission's recommendation for public art installations.
Mayor, if I could just lead into this while Kurt's walking to the podium. This is the first time you've seen something like this in a work session, so this is, we're trying out a new process. This was after the discussion of new art showing up in the park, especially the revolving art in Brook Street Park that's quite noticeable, that the city council wanted to retain some ownership ability to say yes or no to art before it's actually installed. So Kurt's coming tonight, and we'll do this in the future, is coming to you tonight with a recommendation from the board that's recommending two additional, I'm not going to try not to do his presentation, but two new additional pieces of art in the community, and we're just looking for your feedback that if you say, "No, that's not Alpharetta," we'll take that back to the drawing board. If you genuinely are fine with it, we'll move on. But this is a, I wanted to lay out the foundation of this new item because this is the way we'll try to do this from now on, until you all tell me this doesn't work, and then we'll figure out something different.
Thank you for the explanation. Mr. Kurt?
Yeah. Always something. Last time I couldn't pronounce the director's name, so I'm going, from now on, can fix that by calling him Morgan, which is out of town, at a board of trustees meeting for the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association. So I'm filling in and pinch hitting for him tonight. And yes, we have a recommendation from the Cultural Arts Commission for two pieces of art to be installed along the Alpha Loop. Both of these are along the new portion, which are along Old Milton Parkway to North Winds Parkway. And you have these actual pieces in your packet. You got one that's named Completion, the other Life Will. This is in a partnership with the Alpha Loop Foundation, who will be purchasing the sculptures. The city in return would be coordinating the installation and the long-term maintenance of it. This is also part of the public art initiative that we've been doing for several years. We have allocated funds for the installation of those through that initiative. Having said that, if you have any questions to me or staff, I'd be happy to answer those.
Does council have any questions? Mr. Kirby? Seeing no questions from council. I assume that gives you a clear enough direction to pursue.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So the next item up under work session items is the Tax Allocation District Number Three, North Point Area Redevelopment Plan. Director Cook, would you like to start us off?
Just a quick introduction of what we're doing tonight. Of course, this is a workshop item, so we, after we receive comment, if it's the will of council, we'll move it forward and advertise it for public hearings in November. And staff retained Bleakley Advisory Group to assist the city in evaluating opportunities that could result from creating a tax allocation district for the North Point area. Bleakley Advisory Group has completed preliminary findings, which they'll present for discussion, and if instructed by the mayor and council to move forward, we'll draft the final redevelopment plan and again bring that back after advertising in November. The district will help achieve the goals that you've already passed with the North Point LCI. Of course, we had the framework plan also that was passed, and that was all detailed within the 2018 LCI plan. It included transportation improvements, of course, there was trail improvements, there was also public green space, and there could be assistance moving forward for redevelopment projects. But I'll go ahead and turn it over to Gary, and I think you can probably hook that presentation up here and move forward.
Just bear with me for a second. All right. Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. I know you have a long agenda tonight, so I will try to be quick. As Kathy said, we've been working with staff the last couple of months, thinking about a new redevelopment plan and a tax allocation district for North Point. I wanted to briefly touch upon four things tonight, kind of again, just for the record, give you a real quick overview of what tax allocation districts are, talk a little bit about the original 2019 North Point Redevelopment Plan, talk about the potential of a new TAD in that area and in terms of tax digest and how much potential increment could be leveraged for redevelopment projects there. So again, just real quick overview, I know many of you are familiar with what tax allocation districts are, but in Georgia, tax increment financing is enabled under the Georgia Redevelopment Powers Law. Tax increment financing is used all over the country. In Georgia, there's a couple of quirks with the law that you can only use this tool if in areas which have been designated as redevelopment areas by the local government after approving and adopting a redevelopment plan. So TADS are not community improvement districts or anything like that, and they don't impact property taxes collected within that geography. A tax allocation district is simply a list of parcels within a redevelopment area as part of the redevelopment plan. A TAD can be a few parcels, it could be many parcels, it can be the same geography as the redevelopment area, and some redevelopment areas actually much larger, and you can formulate or designate more than one tax allocation district within a redevelopment area. You can also amend a redevelopment plan with an initial tax allocation district three, four, five years later, if you want to create a second TAD within the same redevelopment area, you can do so simply by amending the plan. And in Georgia, creating a district does not obligate the county and school district to go along, their participation is voluntary. Several years ago, when we started doing this, there weren't many TADS in Georgia. This was kind of a new thing. Well, over the last decade, this slide's kind of interesting, in 2014, there were about 50 TADS in the state with about $4.5 billion in digest. 10 of those 50 TADS were in Atlanta. Over the last decade, the numbers doubled. There's more than 100 districts statewide now, and there's more than, almost 15, more than actually, $15 billion within tax allocation districts around the state. That growth in digest is mostly a function of the number of districts increasing, but there's also in cases where TADS have been successful, they've been well-designed, communities have been aggressive in implementing them. We've seen digest growths within TADS that are two to three times the rate of digest growth in the municipality or in the host county and school districts. So they are very successful when the plan is sound and the communities are committed to implementing them. This is just a partial list of cities and counties that we know of that have tax allocation districts. The ones in red are in Fulton County. Again, up until recently, you know, the vast majority of these were south of I-20. Roswell established a TAD last year and have just started. Alpharetta's had two in the past, and you've chosen to dissolve them. So this would be the second TAD in Fulton County north of I-20. This slide kind of just talks a little bit about TAD's work. When the district is formed, there is a base value established in the district. For the period of time the district's in effect, the community continues to collect taxes on the digest that existed when the base was created. Over time, if redevelopment is successful, the digest will grow faster than what it would have otherwise, and that increase in increment can be spent within the district. If you can get the county and the school district to go along at 100% of, 100% participation, we lost it, basically 80% of the revenues going to the TAD would come from the county and school district. So there's, again, the opportunity to leverage additional increment. And the real challenge with these things is the forfeited revenue to a local government is not the difference between the base and what happens with redevelopment. The question is, what would happen if you did nothing? And the goal is to obviously get the difference between those lines as wide as possible and to leverage increment, invest that increment, and get your investment back as soon as possible and dissolve the TAD as soon as possible.
Sir, if you wouldn't try just wiggling the mousepad at Mike?
Yeah, are you not able to see?
No.
Let me try.
That's always.
Yeah. I hate technology.
Wonderful. Make my work.
Yeah. I mean, it's, the screen's on, the HD.
We're in the Rockies now.
Well, our technology looks like it's going to cause us to go to paper again, so let's, this is the technology in this room, it works about 20% of the time. So if we could just pause for a minute, maybe we can continue on the agenda, and we'll get paper copies of your presentation that we can then display on this machine so that they can see, and we'll just finish that way. If we're not going to be able to get it back on the screen, I'll have staff work with you to make the appropriate number of copies here real quick.
Yeah, I have a lot of numbers. It won't be.
It's going to be hard with you just standing there talking to them without it, yeah.
That's fine. If we're going to do this for the public, we need to make sure the public can see it, so.
I agree with you.
If council has no objection, let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
Pardon? Let me ask staff, and if we were to get it on this machine here, is it going to be visible on these monitors? Let's try it.
So Kathy, why don't we have you facilitate the paper flip here, and we're going to cross
our fingers and hope for the best? Wait, Kathy, we might have what we need here in the room. I was gonna. Now we just need to see if we can get it in focus, and then we'll hopefully be good to go.
Man, this reminds me of the 1980s with these overheads. So this is the slide that showed the increase in the number of TADS in Georgia, again, increasing, basically doubling the number and increasing the amount of digest severalfold. And the number of communities in Fulton County, in Georgia with tax allocation districts, the communities in Fulton County in red, and again, most of the existing TADS in the county are south of I-20. And I would say that, you know, the process of getting county and school district consent in Fulton is a little bit more difficult than in other jurisdictions. I'll just leave it at that. Again, this is the discussion of the, you know, how tax increment works, and again, the objective, when we're writing these redevelopment plans, we write plans to try to make the difference between what you can achieve with the use of this tool versus digest growth without it, to make that difference as wide as possible, and to be able to dissolve, to get your, you know, get your objectives achieved, and, you know, the TAD dissolved as quickly as possible. So how does financing work? Basically, there's two ways to leverage property tax increment in one of these districts. One is to either incentivize projects directly or indirectly by spending the dollars on public improvements that make projects more viable. And financing is delivered either by issuing bonds upfront, and increasingly, a number of communities are using reimbursement agreements on smaller projects. It's just much more efficient in terms of a financing tool. And in many cases, there, you know, communities use both tools in similar, in the same district. What can TAD funds be used for? Basically, anything, the statute's very broad in terms of what defines eligible redevelopment costs. It's new construction, it's rehabilitation, it's historic preservation, it's public infrastructure, parking facilities, open space, transit, basically anything that's needed to support, to make redevelopment possible is allowable under the statute, provided, the only restriction is that revenues generated within a tax allocation district can only be spent on costs within that district. So as you all know, North Point had a tax allocation district and a plan that was approved back in 2019. The TAD was later dissolved in 2023 after COVID, but the 2019 TAD, it's kind of interesting, there were 138 parcels and almost 900 acres within that TAD. The base digest of the TAD that was certified was a little over $270.7 million. It was 5% of the city's gross tax digest at the time, and the objective of that plan, as Kathy mentioned, was to implement the North Point Activities Center, LCI. We projected at the time that the TAD could generate about $65 million in funds that could be used to help offset the cost of $165 million worth of public infrastructure projects primarily within the district. And at the time, we only estimated that, you know, less than $5 million would be needed as, you know, direct contribution to make redevelopment feasible. There was a redevelopment strategy for the mall at that time, but it was, it was quite modest, and the amount of TAD funds that would have been needed for that project was, again, a relatively small percentage of the total. So what's happened since 2019? Well, there's been some significant changes. I did not track the entire district, but I did track values in the nine parcels that make up the North Point Mall since 2019. And it's really interesting and concerning that, you know, the taxable value of those nine mall parcels, the full value has fallen by $100 million, 50% basically, since 2019. The tax digest of the tax allocation districts of, as a whole, as it was constituted then, has grown, but the mall itself, which was 30% of the digest, again, has decreased by 47% since that time. When you look at the impacts on personal property as well, the total property taxes collected from the mall has fallen by nearly $2.5 million since 2019. And that's a combination of changing millage rates, but it's mostly attributed to declining values. That's a reduction in property taxes of 14% per year compounded since 2019. So the trend line hasn't been flat, it hasn't even been growing, you know, it hasn't been growing modestly, it's been declining. So there's been an opportunity cost of doing nothing in terms of that property over the last six years. And, you know, distressed malls have become, not a anomaly, but a more prevalent problem regionally and nationally, and that strategies to reuse these sites now are much more complicated and costly than they're used to be. So the bottom line is that a new TAD will have to be, or we recommend, to be much more focused on redevelopment of the mall parcels and the halo effect of that than the original objectives years ago, which was to implement the LCI study and the public improvements in that study. So basically, what we've done over the last four, two months is to look at the area, the map, you know, the underlying values of the tax parcels in the area, we actually started with a large geography and worked its way down. We also looked at projects that have been proposed outside of the mall itself, all in an effort to kind of right-size this tax allocation district. And ultimately, we came up with a study area that is pretty similar, a recommendation for a tax allocation district. It's pretty similar to the 2019 plan. Again, we just started with a much larger geography, but it just kind of made sense, and we're ending up with a recommended district that totals about 850 acres with a 2024 tax digest of about $257 million. We don't have the 25, the 2025 parcel values yet, at least I don't have them at KB, so these totals will change. But, you know, we're actually recommending a smaller TAD than back in 2019. The mall itself, again, was the centerpiece of 2019, it's the centerpiece of this plan, and the digest under the mall in 2024 was about $50 million, a little under $51 million. And the decline that I talked about a couple of slides earlier ended in 2025, there's a slight increase, but I believe the parcels are under repeal again, so we don't know for sure what the ultimate base value of this new TAD would be. This, this table, which you probably can't read very well, looks at the base digest of the proposed TAD. Again, it's about $256 million, of which, you know, just under $51 million is associated with the nine mall parcels, and the surrounding real estate in the map shaded blue on the previous slide is another $205 million. So that's where the digest is, how it's constituted, and that represents a little under 3% of your 2024 citywide digest. As part of this exercise, we had to come up with a conceptual redevelopment plan for the North Point Mall site itself. And we also, as mentioned, we had additional projects that we know about, that staff knows about, that's happening in the surrounding, the area surrounding the mall, so we had that data, and so we needed to combine that with a development scenario for the mall. At this point in time, we don't have, you know, an actual site plan, so this is a hypothetical site plan that's representative. The Community Development Department's done a lot of research on comparable mall properties around the, around the country, and we believe this is a realistic scenario, both in terms of the site's physical potential to support this, as well as the potential values when the mall is built out. This number could be low or high depending on numerous factors, including, you know, what's, is there an anchor tenant? Is the focus of the redevelopment strategy employment creation, is this residential? There are a number of variables that could affect the build-out of the site, but we believe this is a realistic scenario which would result in about 2,000 housing units, again, on this 94-acre site, 2,000 housing units, 1,300,000 square feet of commercial space, which would include retail office and hotels. We believe the potential taxable full value at build-out would be close to $1.9 billion, that's a reasonable goal for the site, and the digest would be $750 million. Again, you know, on a site where the digest last year was $51 million. So that is, you know, the objective for the mall parcels. This looks at the build-out potential of the entire tax allocation district. The bottom line is, you know, the North Point Mall site with the numbers I just cited, the rest of North Point, and this is acreage that are just under proposed projects, not the entire TAD. So approximately 200 acres of the 600-plus-or-minus-acre district, we believe there are redevelopment sites that can support projects. And outside of the mall itself, there's another 112 acres of projects which would include, could support another 650 housing units, another 140 hotel rooms, another 140,000 of retail, and you've had longstanding, large-scale office projects in that area, so that's another $1.8 million. So, you know, the total build-out potential of the entire So, you know, the total build-out potential of the entire TAD commercially is close to 3 million square feet. But again, both the mall site itself and the real estate surrounding the mall. So this slide looks at the build-out potential of the entire study area in terms of digest, tax digest. And this looks at, again, just the digest underneath parcels where projects, we believe there are potential new projects in and outside of the mall itself. We believe that, you know, the digest could increase from a current level, again, just in that portion of the TAD, from $159 million to almost $1.1 billion in terms of tax digest. That's 40% value. And so the bottom line is, if that happens, then what does that mean in terms of potential revenue to the TAD? And potential revenue is dependent on, you know, a number of factors, both, you know, the number of projects, the size of the district that has ultimately improved, but also at what level of participation will the school district agree with this, with this district? So this, this table shows three different scenarios, ranging from just the city and county alone to 50% participation by the school district, 50% of their increment provided to the TAD, the rest of it rebated back to the school district in terms of a pilot payment, which is basically their current policy. And then the last column is full school district consent. If we could convince the school district that this project is so important to the future of the district, given that school taxes have been declining within the mall over the last six years, that they might participate at a higher level in their established policy. And you can see that the bottom line is that the TAD could generate, when you translate this down into what's the dollar value of what, what it's worth in today's dollars for getting interest rates and the interest portion of financing, what could you actually deliver in terms of incentives to the project? And it ranges from $173 million, $174 million without the school district, to almost $390 million with the full participation of the school district, and about $282 million if they participate according to their established policy. And then this final slide just kind of talks about what the redevelopment plan has to address. Well, what would you use this revenue for if it is generated? And what we're suggesting as an initial allocation of funds is that the majority of that be dedicated to direct development incentives, most of which would be invested in the mall parcels, anywhere from, again, depending on whether the school district consents or not, could be anywhere from $150 to $330 million. The rest would be allocated to transportation improvements and some of the place-making activities that are in the LCI study, some of which you've implemented already over the last six years, and some of which remain to be done. So I only have two, two slides left. So what does this all mean? Again, just, I won't go through all of this, but I think the one thing that we recommend that you consider as a city council when you get this draft redevelopment plan is that you consider preserving the option to pledge personal property taxes, as well as real estate taxes to redevelopment, and possibly even sales tax revenue coming off the site. The only other cases where sales tax revenue's been pledged are within TADs where there's no retail currently. So it would be a very difficult exercise to figure out what's the base sales tax coming off the TAD. So that may not be possible, but you could pledge personal property taxes, which can be estimated, the base value can be estimated. By enabling those options in the redevelopment plan doesn't obligate you to use them, but it leaves the option open should you need to. So that's why we recommend, we at least put that language in the draft document, and you can ultimately decide down the road whether you want to use that capability. And then just, again, talk about next steps. We hope to have a draft plan to you available sometime in October. At that point in time, the only action you would need to take is to instruct staff to schedule the public hearings. There is a minimum requirement of one public hearing. Many communities do two. At the conclusion of the public hearing process, then you decide, you would vote on a resolution to adopt a TAD. Hopefully, that would happen sometime in November, if not, early December at the latest. And then from that point, we work with the tax assessor and certify the value of the district. That's done around the, in January. And then you would be, if, once the certification is received, you would be in a position to negotiate with the county and school districts on intergovernmental agreements. And that's all I have.
Do we have any questions for the presenter? Councilman Dorito.
Thank you, Gary, for the presentation. This is, from my perspective, something that we need to seriously consider.
Sure.
The North Point Mall corridor has been an area of focus by even the previous city council, and the city council to try to redevelop that corridor for the future economic stability of the city. And in today's economy, public-private partnerships tend to generate faster results and actually more return on our investment in the city than letting private investment kind of drive the train and move the ball forward. My concerns, and I'd like to kind of get your professional opinion on other TADs and mall areas that you've been involved with. What's been the consistent result and timing of setting up a TAD in other jurisdictions and similar to North Point Mall area, and how fast of a turnaround? I'll call it a turnaround because we do need to do something to kind of stimulate the economy in the North Point Mall area.
Sure. Yeah, you're all over the map with that question. I mean, you have cases, Duane Place being one example, where that TAD was originally created in 2008, I believe. Then it was dissolved and reconstituted in 2012, and there's very little that's happened. The county's bought the real estate, but in terms of tax digest, there's been very little happened in that TAD. So, I mean, these are, these are large-scale projects. They take time to plan. I would think if the goal is to encourage a redevelopment of that site that could generate close to $2 billion in total value on 93 acres, it's going to take probably close to a decade to fully build out. That's if you have a developer and you have an anchor and, you know, you start construction, you know, within two years. So, I mean, it's, it's a 10-year process. To be able to leverage, you know, $100 million, $200 million right away is going to be very difficult. So my guess is that you'd be looking at a financing strategy that has two, possibly even three, tranches of bonds, possibly leveraging other sources as well. So these are complicated projects. And the one thing that you would have going for you in this TAD is that there's more to it than just the mall, than, you know, the 93 acres of the mall itself. There are other things going on as well, which would hopefully make financing easier. It's an area of the city that's been stable, has, the digest has not grown substantially. So, again, there would be, there would be challenges. The main thing is to get a credible developer and, you know, get the county and school district on board at some level of participation.
And going out of a TAD in the North Point Mall area, and you spoke about, the city could either choose to, you know, fill up bonds for the public-private improvements that we need to incentivize the area and bring development or redevelopment in the area. But the bonds would then be, in effect, paid off by all the taxpayers in Alpharetta, right? Versus the incremental adjustments or incremental financing from a TAD that would be focused on the incremental increase in property tax revenues from the TAD district, which would be what would pay for the, the improvements that the city and the developer might decide to, to use those funds for.
Sure.
Is that a fair statement?
Well, some TADs have been successful without requiring the pledge of, you know, the full faith and credit of the city. You know, Atlantic Station was accomplished just by tax increment only. They were, the city was not at risk. Other communities have chosen to take the risk of guaranteeing the bonds at some level in order to get the interest rate down. And they're, in those cases, they risked a period of years, two, three, four years, where the incremental revenues from the district weren't enough to pay 100% of the debt service on the bonds. And so in those cases, yeah, you have to have another source of funds. Eventually, if you're successful, you can backfill those shortfalls, you know, repay this, you know, the general fund for whatever, or your capital improvements fund for that period of time, and, you know, eventually, there is enough increment to pay the bonds and then some. Duluth has, you know, been very successful in doing that. You know, they, they issued a URA bond after the TAD was created and when there was some redevelopment that's gone on. It's a URA bond, it's, it's the obligation of the city to pay it, but there's always been enough increment in the TAD fund to more than pay the debt service on the bonds. Even small communities like Flowery Branch have been able to do that and have never had to touch their general fund, so.
Okay. So there's a risk, obviously, to the city, right? However, there's a lot more upside to it as well, right?
Sure.
So you, you kind of got to balance both sides of the equation. As far as the tax increment financing, you pointed out the Georgia redevelopment powers law. Are we, I don't know the answer, is are we already set up to be able to do that, just have to go to referendum before?
Yes.
After we do the redevelopment plan and the council approves it, then does it go to referendum to the voters?
No, the referendum only needs to happen once. The city was authorized by the voters many years ago.
So it doesn't have to be reauthorized?
No.
Okay. And then, let me see if I have any other further questions. You answered your question on Slide 10. I was going to say, what, what can these funds be utilized for? And it's pretty much anything with respect to redevelopment, both private investment and, and public improvements. And then, the, obviously, you, you project on your final pages, the incremental increase with full participation, full participation of Fulton County schools. And you also made a comment that it's difficult to even get 50% with Fulton County right now. So is it fair to say, like, we should be at least anticipating the types of incremental revenues that the TAD could generate in a public-private partnership? We should estimate it at the low end so that we make the right decisions and not, not create any risk for the city?
Sure.
Is that fair?
Yes. And, you know, the way these things work is that the first step, obviously, is you have to have a redevelopment plan. And a plan, a plan is non-binding on anything, anyone. It's just a plan. It's, it's a blueprint. It's a strategy. It states the policy of the city council. The rubber hits the road when you negotiate a development agreement and commit the city to provide financing to a developer, to a project, to whatever. And, you know, the process, really, what you can commit really can't be determined until after you have intergovernmental agreements with the county and the school district, and you know what the rules are. Typically, if you have a developer that wants to work with the community, the first question is, how much can we get? The second question from the, you know, the city council is, well, what is your ask? Well, you know, what do you need to make this? And the city can, the city can't make a commitment without first knowing what the ground rules are, and what's the school district's level of participation? What's the county? What's the strings attached, et cetera, et cetera? And you're not going to know that until 2026 at some, at some point. So in terms of initial discussions at this point in time, yeah, count on the low end at best. Hopefully, you know, you'll have a better argument, you know, when it comes time to negotiate with the other jurisdictions. This project is so big, it's so important, it's, it's on a scale of the battery Atlanta in terms of total dollars. And hopefully, the county and the school district would recognize how important that is, and how it affects revenues that have nothing to do with real estate taxes. And they would see the benefit of participating. But time will tell.
Absolutely. And I think whatever message the city council decides to send in the public venue is critically important to demonstrate our commitment to redevelopment, North Point Mall area, in the fashion that our citizens want to see. So whatever the future brings there, you know, I think us, you know, proactively setting up a TAD is, is, I think, the right way to go, so.
Yes.
Councilman Hypes, I believe you had a question?
Thank you, sir. Well, first of all, just, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I know this, uh, community development, and our council have been very proactive over at North Point. We got a $10 million T-Splas II, we got the LCI, we've got the Alpha Loop extension. So, you know, first of all, hats off to community development, my fellow colleagues up here and the city as a whole. And with this as an additional proactive measure, my question has to do with the impact on the overall budget. Were you able, or was it within your purview to determine if the TAD district as drawn generated more revenue than cost incurred, therefore being?
Sure.
Is, is it currently a surplus in which additional revenues go into the non-TAD areas of the city and positively impact the budget? Or is it incurring more costs and generating revenue currently?
Well, I think currently, it's, it's probably a net positive to the city. Not only real estate taxes and personal property taxes, but all the business license revenues that come out of those, those businesses and, you know, alcohol taxes and a whole range of, you know, most cities in Georgia, I haven't studied Alpharetta's budget, but most cities in Georgia, real estate taxes are 30% to 40% of total revenues, real estate taxes. So there's a lot of other revenue that comes out of that area. And the research I've done in other, usually non-residential development, the service cost for that is probably 25% to 30% at most of the revenues they generate. So it's pretty certain the area has a positive fiscal impact now. Now, if you have 2,000 housing units in that site and a whole host of other, other uses, what is that going to do to city service costs long-term? And we have not looked at that. That is a fiscal impact issue that gets pretty complicated. So the answer is, at this point, I haven't, I haven't looked at it. But there will be, with that much growth and development, there will be other revenues going to, you know, to the city budget that are not related to real estate or personal property taxes.
So to, to, to take us through this in this work session, once, if the TAD is approved from the day it goes into effect, are any incremental increases in revenues, those are strictly devoted to the TAD district, correct?
They are placed in a special fund for redevelopment purposes only.
But anything at the base level or below would still be? But anything at the base level or below would still be general operating?
On $256 million of digest, so it's a significant chunk of change, yes.
So maybe that just answers what my question I need. I'm trying to decide, if you look at every area outside the TAD and we finance the rest of the city outside the TAD, what are we, what are we taking out of that part of the budget?
Sure.
To service that part of the city? But it's the incremental increases which may be slow in the beginning and accelerate toward the end?
Right.
Okay, you've answered my question, I appreciate it, thank you.
Councilman Brady?
Yes, I think, so mine is, I know we're in workshop a little bit, so some of the people, some thoughts kind of going through here of what you're looking at, and have some of the same concerns, Councilman Hypes, of like, just understanding impact today from digest dollars kind of received in the city of Alpharetta and what that costs. And ultimately, some of those would be some of the parcels that we had in blue, I think you have those kind of outsourced in blue of where we make these boundaries of the TAD, especially when it creeps into Haynes Bridge. That's where, start to look at that as understand the North Point corridor and having the TAD. Also kind of see TAD as a vehicle, right? It's a financial vehicle, at the end of the day, to accomplish that. You can do it through CID's, you can do it through TADs, you can do it through tax abatements and those things, just like if I want to save for retirement, I use an IRA to get there, right? So that's the vehicle. Question is what we, what we put into that, right? And what the purpose of it would be? So here's some questions I have kind of for that, is if we have that ultimate defined area and we do a baseline of a tax piece, right, for what we, not talking about today is what we want to do, what those dollars would be leveraged in if we did a bond, right? So you take tax digest 1.2 by debt service and we're able to kind of create a monetized amount that would be used in that particular area for redevelopment, right? We don't know that today, so we're not talking about that today. But if we did it and we kind of created that and ultimately the tax digest grows, so now you're saying it's depleted down to 114 million just within the nine parcels you kind of created, and all of a sudden, these things start to grow. Question is, we, how long do we put this in the place for? And how, what happens is tax digest starts to increase within the envelope, when the defined TAD plays, we're collecting more taxes, can we use those tax dollars to ultimately reduce the debt vehicle, which would be the bonds at that particular time? Or do we keep going back to the well and keep using it for more and more kind of things to find? Or is that just collapse the time period that opens up additional taxes at a later period of time? So trying to understand if we do 25 years in taxes and ultimately we take additional tax dollars and reduce that down, this could be a 15-year vehicle or something like that. And those are some of the details of how we create the framework of the TAD, there's kind of one to understand what that is.
Yeah, it's correct. I mean, the city council will be the redevelopment agency, so it's really this body that would make those decisions moving forward. Typically, TADs are in effect until redevelopment costs are paid. Usually, we recommend go into it with the expectation it could be around 25 to 30 years, but bonds could be paid off sooner. There are other cases where, you know, 15 years into the life of a district, a community decides to do a project and finance it beyond what they originally thought was the end date of the TAD. So they could go on longer. But in all of the, the intergovernmental agreements that I've worked with, with counties and school districts, the standard language is that excess increment will be used, that you define excess increment, and one or two things can be done with it. Excess increment could be refunded back to the jurisdiction every year, or it could be accumulated and be used to pay off bonds early. And that standard language is, what the cities try to do, is to get the counties and school districts to read of that language, that if there's excess increment, we keep it and we use it to pay off bonds early. And in your financing, whatever financing you choose to do, you make sure you have that option that you can pay off the bonds without penalty as soon as you're able. And, you know, that's been achieved in multiple places. East Point, for example, in the Camp Creek TAD paid those bonds off in less than 20 years. So it has been done.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We have any other questions? This is a work session, for those of you that might have come in late. I'll just note that this is not a business item, we're not going to be voting, this is simply for council to be able to have a public discussion about this critical issue facing our community.
Yeah, thank you for being here tonight and continuing this conversation about our North Point area. I look at it as being a total opportunity. We've already had plans drawn up for an eco-district, which could include a large-scale development or redevelopment of the mall area. But I like how you referred to it as, as the battery, and like the battery, we already have a bridge that crosses for pedestrian and vehicular, so we don't have to spend the millions of dollars that they did to get additional parking. We already have so many things and we have an active mall group that's on the ball. And they're very invested in this project. So I think this is a natural step toward where we'll be going as a city to make this area redeveloped in such a spectacular way that we're moving our city forward and as a regional draw and a state draw.
Absolutely.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Any other councilman questions or comments? So just to help give a broader perspective, I was mayor when we created the last North Point TAD. And so I want all of you and all of our residents to understand that this council has been very proactive in trying to redevelop that whole corridor for more than a decade with the help of our talented staff who have come up with proposals to help make it an attractive area for reinvestments. And so we're excited about some of the opportunities that we think we have created. But the fact is, we've all learned, those of us on the dais and anyone in our community development department and leadership team, are quite aware that we don't end up with great things in our community without participating, because our ability to influence what they build is dependent on our ability to help participate in making it feasible. And for example, I don't think it'd come to shock to anybody that's really been paying attention to the multiple redevelopment projects we've had proposed for North Point. It would be very easy to have the mall redeveloped tomorrow with thousands and thousands of apartments, because every developer on the face of the earth would love to walk into Alpharetta and just pave over every inch of asphalt with apartments. That's not something that is necessarily in the best interest of our community. And so our ability to redevelop it into something that's going to be an asset for our community depends on us being able to step up and participate, because otherwise you're just at the mercy of the market. And that's a good thing at times, but if we want to live with a redevelopment project there for the next 30, 50 years, we need to be able to have some influence over what that looks like, what those components are, what are the assets that make it significantly better for our whole community for decades to come? And so that's why we're having this discussion. And since I was part of that leadership team, I'll just give you some insight. Look, we have great relationships with Fulton County and the Fulton County school system. And we were beginning, once again, if you look at the timeline we discussed earlier, it just so happened, we chose to come into a TAD for a redevelopment project at the mall right before COVID hit.
Right.
And we had already had productive conversations with Fulton County, because if you heard the numbers that he mentioned earlier, the property taxes, the case that we made when we began, just the overtures of what we might be able to do with a TAD, 80% of those losses are being shouldered by Fulton County schools in Fulton County. So while it's, it's a crimping our style in Alpharetta, we're taking that 20% hit on our property taxes, but it's a bigger number to them. They're talking billions, that it's negatively impacting them. So they're really talented organizations, we've got great relationships with both of them, they're not going to do anything that's not in their best interest. And we're not going to pull anything over them, and we would never even try. But we will approach them and let them look at the numbers and let them make thoughtful decisions, because it's not in the school board's interest to just walk away and let that, that whole corridor die, because it's going to really negatively impact their ability to serve their students, our students, and the rest of the county. So I think it's a reasonable process. It won't be quick, it'll be a lot of attorneys talking about how, you know, and working something that is best for our community, but also best for our partners in Fulton County and the Fulton County school system. So that's why we're going through this process. And I think we do need to proceed, and hopefully we'll be able to proceed quickly, and God willing, we'll have an exciting project come forward, just in the nick of time to get something done and be able to fund it quickly and get it underway, because nobody wants North Point corridor more than we do, who've had to deal with the decline over the last six, seven years as elected officials who've already approved two or three plans that never came to fruition for economic reasons beyond our control. So, thank you for everyone, I appreciate your attention, appreciate council's attention.
Thank you for the time.
Appreciate your efforts.
See you in October.
Okay. So now we'll move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda has two items, which are the city council meeting minutes from the meeting of August 25th, 2025, and the property damage only release, City of Alpharetta, Shawn Alfiter, and Allstate Property and Casualty Insurance. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comments?
We do not for this item, sir.
However, if anyone would like to speak to this item, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion from council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilman Hypes and a second by Councilman Dorito. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. So now we'll move on to the new business portion of this evening's meeting. First item being the fiscal year 2026 Georgia Department of Transportation Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant. Patrick, will you please read the resolution?
What I live for. You'll be considering a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia to submit a fiscal year 2026 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant application to the Georgia Department of Transportation.
Thank you very much, sir. Director Sucevich, would you please begin?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. Before your night is the LMIG grant application. It's $781,161.80. We have a matching requirement of $234,348.54. And like all previous years, we are, as part of the FY26 capital budget, it's going towards our milling and resurfacing project.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any questions from Mr. Sucevich? Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item? Ms. Shapiro?
We do not.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this item, now's your chance. And I do not see anyone come forward, so we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mayor, moved to adopt the resolution authorizing the submittal of fiscal year 2026 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant application to Georgia Department of Transportation with authorization for the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Dorito and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel. Any discussion? All those in favor of the item, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. So we'll move along to the invitation to bid 26-001 fiscal year 2026 Milling and Resurfacing. Director Sucevich, once again.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this is our annual milling and resurfacing bid that we went out, and we had a great group of bidders that came in, we got 10 bids that came in with Triple R paving as the low bid. And what we did, as part of this project, we included a milling and resurfacing of Academy Street. We have received numerous complaints over the last couple of years on Academy Street regarding not being able to see coming out of Market Street to make a turn out of Academy Street, that's over by Central City Tavern, as well as calls of concerns of the delivery trucks, both residential and commercial, parked in the middle of Academy Street and impeding the flow of traffic, as well as making it more difficult for turn movements to take place. Simple solutions consist of, you know, installing bollards, that is not a great method, is a high maintenance for us, we don't like to install bollards. So we decided to do a resurfacing. And we have two options on the table for that, for council's input. Option one consisted of, and it's a little small to see, I apologize, what's in your packet, is basically removing the bike shoulders, they're not lanes on Academy Street, the shoulders, about two and a half, three feet wide, and adding 19 parallel parking spaces along Brook Street Park. And what we are able to do is, this option on Market Street, you have a lot of, we call it the white striping gore areas, and what you're able to do is creep up into that gore area safely, cars are not going to hit you, it's not part of the vehicular lane to make an easier movement. We all received feedback from individuals, say, is there another way, can we keep the bike route? And we can, and all that requires is stopping the movement a little sooner. And there's no parking in front of Brook Street, we keep the couple-foot bike route there and move forward. Just for reference, there is no bike route or lane on Milton Avenue west of State Route 9. So that was part of the premise of, like, it stopped there already, we go from there, we have the Alpha Loop on Haynesbridge Road, you can still get to the Alpha Loop on Haynesbridge Road and that area as well. So we're open, either one, we're not sold on other, options are good. If we want to keep the bike community more happier, we keep the bike route. If we feel like we need additional parking in downtown, you have 19 additional parking spaces that have been found through simple restructuring. We're not touching the gutter, we're not touching curb, it's just simple restructuring.
Councilman Hypes?
Thank you, Director Pete. I appreciate you making these available prior to tonight, and obviously, we had spoken offline. You know, I have a very, very strong preference to keep the bike, I call it a bike lane, if it's got a different name, I'm just going to call it a bike lane. There's a place for bicycles to ride where cars aren't supposed to be, and it's being used by bicycles downtown, right out here in front of the park on Academy Street. And, you know, I think one of our really, really good partners with the city is Bike Alpharetta, and I reached out to the president, Jackie Tyson, and they, they weren't aware of this possibility, but she did express to me that they very, very much want to retain those. And if anybody's been downtown walking around on a Wednesday evening, you'll see bicycles all around. So my extremely strong preference is to not put parking spaces there, but to keep it bike-friendly. To become more car-centric downtown feels like a gigantic step backwards from the progressive move of our city to make it more bike-friendly, more pedestrian-friendly, less car-centric. Not to mention that I think if cars were parked out here in front of one of our most beautiful parks with artwork, et cetera, that, that would greatly detract from the beauty of downtown as well. So I want to put it on the record, I think I've spoken with you offline, have a very strong preference to not put parallel parking on this stretch right out here.
Yep.
Councilman Dorito?
Yeah, Mayor, I want to agree with Councilman Hypes, I think he outlined it well and the reasons why, and I think it's critically important to fulfill Councilman Hypes' recommendations, because he's right on point of what we're trying to achieve as far as the environment in the downtown district of Alpharetta.
Is this a question?
No.
No, no. You had questions. He was asking to be called. I was just making sure. We will have plenty of time to have discussions.
Yeah, I got one.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim?
So it's either yes or no. Is that what you're asking for here tonight? It seems like there's a couple of options.
There's two options, basically. It's...
But they both involve parking spaces?
No. If we keep the, if you want parking spaces, the bike shoulder goes away.
Understood.
If you want the bike shoulder, there is no parking spaces.
Okay.
So if you want bike shoulder, no parking spaces.
I'll have to wait and see what the motion is then.
Councilman Mitchell, I believe you have a question?
I do. In the top example, you have the yellow line. Did I hear you correctly when you said that the delivery trucks on the top one here, yeah, right there, was it your suggestion that delivery trucks park in the middle of that?
No, my suggestion is that it would be technically illegal to park in the middle of that. Right now, what you have out in front, why they get away with it, it's called, they have a yellow, solid yellow line and a skip yellow line, two-way left turn lane. We're not prohibiting the left turn into the church. You can still make that turn, just like you make the turn coming out of Park Plaza on the Haynesbridge Road, across the yellow there, but you're not allowed to park a vehicle in that solid, double solid yellow lines.
Right. So we're still left with the problem of where these delivery trucks are parking, and that remains an issue, no matter which way we vote here.
There is loading zones along Academy Street.
Right.
If they still desire to choose.
And how have they been working?
How long have they been working? I would say infrequent. It's easier for them to park in the middle of the street.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Pete.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Pete. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak to this item, now's your chance. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mayor. Moved to approve the award of invitation to bid number 26-001 to Triple R paving for an amount totaling $4,016,796.73 with fiscal year 2026 Milling and Resurfacing Project and authorized the mayor to execute all necessary documents. And one addition that, I'm trying to understand how I present this as far as an addendum to that motion to to remove the parking.
Bike shoulder option.
And included with the bike shoulder option. There you go. Thank you.
Removing the bike?
No, include the bike shoulder option as...
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilman Dorito, second by Councilman Mitchell. Any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes. I'll make sure we worded this right. We are not going to put parking spaces in. We're going to leave it like it is. Is that what we're coming with? Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say, I think this is a better option, especially for our bike community. I agree with Councilman Hypes with, but I'd like to withdraw the word progressive. That's a little nasty for me to say, but other than that, I agree with him. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion as outlined by Councilman Dorito, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. So the next item will be invitation to bid 26-002 sidewalk construction on multiple road sections. Director Sasevich, once again.
Yes. The design team within Public Works has been busy. We have three separate sidewalk projects we're working on, two of the Alpha Loop and one of part of our T-Spotz project. Coming Street sidewalk was originally going from Cricket Lane all the way to Claremont subdivision. There was a home builder that came in, built sidewalk along Cricket Lane. So we're going to continue that sidewalk all the way to Claremont subdivision, include crossing over the creek that's out there. It'll be a four-foot beauty strip and an eight-foot wide sidewalk in that area. Additionally, we are looking at, in that area, we have several utility poles to relocate, and since this is a streetscape project, meaning we're not moving that vehicle, improvement the flow of vehicles, per our franchise fee agreement, we are required to pay for the utilities to be relocated as part of a streetscape project. Sidewalks are streetscapes projects. So it's another $150,000 towards the utilities to be relocated from Georgia Power. On top of that, we included two Alpha Loop sections, one section from Rousell Street in front of the community center. It's going to go from Rousell Street to just south of the community center entrance by Mayfair Main. We're going to go across the street right there and use their existing Alpha Loop connection they have right there to continue it. So we'll have, once it's done, we'll have continuation along all of, yeah, all along Rousell Street, all the way to downtown to Old Rousell Street. When we're done, we finished the previous section in front of, across from Pure this past year. On top of that, we've got the Kingery Lane connection, which is from Thompson Street to Old Milton Parkway. It's going to be on the land that we own that's adjacent to the post office. The post office is getting a reminder that we own that land, and we'll be removing their infrastructure that's there if they don't do before a certain set date when we start construction. The developer right there is responsible for the intersection work, so they will be installing the crosswalk. They'll be installing the mast arms, the ped buttons and all that associated with the project. That's not part of this project. So we had multiple bids that came in. Again, we're very pleased, and sole construction was a low bid at $1,958,523.30. The next bid was just at 2.2 million, so very competitive bid process. We had a total of six bids, companies submit with several repeats, which is good news for us, seeing people come back and want to be competitive. All three projects will take approximately 14 months to complete, with Rousell Street starting first because part of the Rousell Street project is included within the Will's Park improvement as well. So we want to get that one done so the contractor can work on the Will's Park project. A lot of information, but a lot of...
Because it's all good.
It's all good.
Thank you. Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you. Thank you, Pete. This is exciting to see this come forward. It's been a long time, and I'm glad we're getting the bridge there over the creek. We have a lot of pedestrian traffic on the Coming Street part. Where Mr. Young thankfully provided the sidewalk to the city, I'm still seeing a lot of pedestrians cross over, and will this address that issue or not?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, we're not going to look at worrying about that issue until State Route 9 is complete.
Okay.
Because you're not far from State Route 9. That's going to have a 10-foot wide sidewalk. It's going to be all, so we're going to see what that gets done, and hopefully this time next year, and see what the traffic of movement is right now. Right now, everyone's cutting right by Cricket Lane because they don't want to walk up State Route 9, given the construction site that it is. So we understand that, and once we install something, taking it away is very, very challenging. So it's waiting to see what the traffic pattern is after State Route 9 is finished to see what we need to do.
Yeah, it's a challenging issue to solve right there.
Given Cricket Lane ties into Brook Street Park.
Right.
We believe more people are really trying to get to city center itself, which will have an easier connection along 9.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Brady?
First of all, thank you so much, Pete. We love to see the sidewalks go in. Makes it more walkable. It's absolutely great. One question kind of about the corridor there. First of all, the Alpha Loop coming down Rousell Street looks great, and that's on the side that I guess the Zaxby's is on. Now, we've got improvements going in the other side where we have Will's Park, right? So there's already sidewalk structure there, but if you're coming down the Alpha Loop and you cross over to Zaxby's, Zaxby's has a sidewalk there, and then there's one gap right there that has no sidewalk because Mayfair just put in their sidewalks all the way around, which takes them into Devoire, which is really nice. So it kind of takes you down to the connection all the way down, you know, to QT and Atli. Is there anything there to hit that one gap? The reason why, it just has you going, cross over the road, cross over the road, back and forth, back and forth. Is there any way to fill in maybe a couple of these little pieces in there?
In that particular area, there's some very, very large specimen trees.
Well, the sidewalk runs right into the specimen tree, so...
That are not on our, that are not on our property that will...
Mayfair put that one in? It's really weird because I just walked, you literally walked down this brand-new sidewalk and stopped in front of a 30-inch oak tree, which is fine. We're not going to take that down.
We looked at the, when the Rousell Street connection was being looked at as being part of master plan, it was, as much as we don't like crossing Old Milton Parkway and then crossing Rousell Street again to pick the loop back up, it was just going to be too much damage to the street. So they elected to go on the other side, and then when those streets do hit their point of...
So I've seen a lot of other cities put in like just a wood piece right there, kind of a protection or something like that. I just didn't know when the overall plan, was that a no-go?
Yeah, so way back, there was, I want to say it was five years ago, four years ago, there was actually an easement granted on that duplex property next to the community center, and we are stopping our sidewalk right there, and then crossing the street right past. So we're going to line up right with the Mayfair's sidewalk.
Great. Thanks, Pete. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak, now is your chance to speak. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mayor. Moved to approve the award of a contract for ITB 26-002 to sole construction LLC for the construction of sidewalk in Alpha Loop along multiple road sections, amount not to exceed $1,958,522.30. Approval of the Georgia Power poles relocation on Coming Street, estimated $150,000, authorized to make execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion by Councilman Dorito, a second by Councilman Brady. Any discussion? Sidewalks are good. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the item, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, sir. The next item up will be the purchase and services agreement, Tesla Inc. Chief Langren.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have for your consideration tonight a request to purchase and install four Tesla DC fast chargers at police headquarters. This is a project that's in our existing budget, and it is to basically be able to fuel our existing fleet of vehicles and then set us up for the future, for future EVs. This initiative's going to promote sustainability. One of the biggest complaints we hear from citizens is they're always wondering why our gas vehicles are idling all the time, and what we've seen with the EVs is a tremendous response because we can keep them powered without, you know, any environmental damage and any cost and sort of the fuel and the gas expenditure. There's not currently a lot of infrastructure for EVs, especially fast chargers, inside the city limits of Alpharetta, so this would be a huge opportunity for the city. These would be available to the public as well as serve the police department, and that will ultimately help the city offset the cost of acquiring these. And this is a unique opportunity that we have. The only reason that we're even able to discuss this is because we've been able to have a unique partnership with Georgia Power through the Make Ready program, where they're covering more than half of the cost of the installation of this project in order to expand EV availability to the public and to support public safety as we acquire EVs into our fleet. So, yeah, that's basically it. What I'm asking for is the approval of the purchase agreement, the service agreement with Tesla, and then also the installation agreement with ITS.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any questions for Chief Langren? Well done. No questions.
All right.
Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak about the Tesla chargers, now's your chance. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd offer a motion this evening to approve Chief Langren's request for purchase and service agreement with Tesla Inc. as he presented this evening.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel and a second by Councilman Dorito. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving as outlined in the motion, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the purchase approval for the vehicular barricade for fiscal year 2026 city festivals. Mr. Kirby, you once again have the floor.
Hello again. Mayor and Council, for your consideration, the purchase approval for Meridian Rapid Defense Group LLC to rent, install, and remove vehicle barricades for the city to use during the fiscal year 26 Taste of Alpharetta, Wire and Wood, and Brew Moon events. Following the January 1st, 2025 traffic event where a vehicle accessed the event area through sidewalks, the city successfully deployed this system for the 2025 Taste of Alpharetta. With that success, staff feels like we need to move forward with the same system for this year's events coming up, which is going to be, first one's going to be Wire and Wood. To, in preparation, staff has received sole source designation for this patented system, provided only by Meridian Rapid Defense Group, and has also requested and receive funding for this year's operating budget for the amount of $77,479.93. We ask for approval for moving forward with this, with this group, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Kirby regarding this item? Did a great job. Nobody has any questions. Thanks, sir.
Thanks for going easy on me.
Ms. Shapiro?
We have no public comment cards for this item.
However, if you'd like to come speak about the barrier items, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion for council?
Yes, sir. I make a motion that council approve acquisition of Meridian Rapid Group Defense, Meridian Rapid Defense Group LLC to rent, install, and remove vehicular barricades for the fiscal year 2026 Taste of Alpharetta, Wire and Wood, and Brew Moon events, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents for a total project cost not to exceed $77,749.93.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Hypes and a second by Councilman Mitchell. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the item, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. Thank you for keeping us safe, sir. The next item is the resolution for the Georgia Environmental Protection Division Recycling and Waste Diversion Grant. Patrick, once again, you're on.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, before you, is a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, supporting an application for the Georgia Environmental Protection Division's Recycling and Waste Diversion Grant.
Thank you, sir. Ms., are you going to speak on this item?
Excuse me? Yes, sir. I'm speaking.
Okay. It wasn't on my agenda, so...
Well, I'm going for the hat trick, so...
Okay. Don't let me interfere. Go right ahead.
Mayor and Council, city council adopted a city agricultural plan in December of 2022. Within that plan, there were six key themes for this, that the community identified as priority areas, and one of those themes was reduce waste, food waste to composting. This grant would be the continuation of that decentralized organic waste management program, which was launched in last summer, and it would expand the outreach to local schools and local businesses. If supported, this 2.15 million, $269 grant would be, would not require any matching funds if approved. Having said that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Kirby on this item? Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Tell me a little more about where this compost goes after it's been repurposed.
Ooh, that's a good question. Amanda, come on up here. I got, I got somebody got my six to answer some of the specifics.
So close. I'm just wondering, how do we use that within our community?
Amanda, I know you know Amanda Vasselli, our division manager for agriculture and sustainability, so take it away, Amanda.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. What was your question? I'm sorry.
How do we use this compost? How do we use this compost once it's gone through the recycling and, and all of that? Is it being distributed? Do citizens pick it up? Or is it?
Yes, so I'll explain what we do in our current program, which is like a pilot that we're running right now to kind of prove the effectiveness and our ability to manage a program like this. So then we could apply to this larger grant through the state. So what we do right now, we have close to 100 households who are participating in our community compost program. They have purchased at a subsidized rate through a partnership that we have with the manufacturer of food cycle science countertop food dehydrators. They purchase these machines, they have them in their house or their garage, and they put their food waste in there all day, scrape it in there, and then turn it on at night. It cycles what is about the size of a gallon of paint into about a cup of what looks like dried coffee grounds. So you can have bones, you can have dairy products, you can have bread, you can have vegetables, all, anything can go in there, which is unlike what you can do in a typical compost pile. You cannot put dairy products or meat products in there. So it's wonderful because there's no need for our residents to have to separate materials, which is really difficult. And then that dried material is now completely stabilized. It will not smell, it will not attract pests, it will not mold, it will not rot, and it can be left, as long as it is not rehydrated, it can be left in a bucket, it can be left in a garage for years. But we don't want that. What we want is for it to be, and this is what happens in our pilot, residents either put it in their backyard, it can be used as like a topping fertilizer for your garden, or it's brought back to the farm. And we incorporate it into our existing compost facilities with, system, which we have a permit by rule from the state in order to accept off-farm food waste. And it's working really, really well because we can take and reduce the volume of that food waste by about 95%. So we're able to do a lot more food waste diversion through a program like this than we could do if we were hauling raw food waste. That would be messy and stinky and attract a lot of things that we don't want to attract. This takes all of that away and it reduces the volume by 95%, makes it light, makes it easy to transport, and makes it clean. So now we've been operating this pilot for a little over a year, which is what Kurt said, and now we're ready to move into a larger project, which is what this grant would fund. It would enable us to expand these countertop dehydrators to 1,500 households, and it would enable us to put a larger commercial unit in 12 schools here in Alpharetta, which we've already talked to. They're all really excited about the possibility. We've also talked with the folks at the Hamilton Hotel. They're very interested in if, if this is a possibility that is funded, incorporating them into the operations over there, as well as a couple of other restaurants and a grocery store. So this would really enable us to divert millions of pounds of food waste. And I'm not going to talk about this tonight, but if you want to talk about the impact that food waste in our landfill has on our environment, it's terrible. So it'd be really wonderful to be able to remove this from our landfill and, and be a model for not only the county but the state in what real innovative food waste diversion can look like.
I'm glad I asked. Thank you. Sounds incredible. Councilman Hypes?
There's, yeah, there's no way I could answer that. Appreciate Amanda coming out to back us up just in case we do have some questions. It is an exciting program.
We, Mr. Kirby, we had just renewed Whit O'Brien's, I think, contract about three, four weeks ago. And I'm curious, so I can kind of keep track at home, did they help identify this grant to the city? Or did we identify the grant and they're going to help with the execution of the application? I see Amanda saying it's the latter. So I just, you know, trying to keep track of how Whit O'Brien is benefiting the city with these grant dollars. And Ms. Sully gave.
Yeah, that's great. We'll get it, and then we will administer that, yes.
Mr. Shapiro, did you have something to add?
Yes, I was just going to add, so this grant opportunity, Amanda, and correct me if I'm wrong, we did apply for this grant last year, but we were not awarded, but we did receive some feedback from that grant. Last year, Whit O'Brien's did not help us with that application. It was something that we worked on with staff with another one of our community partners. And so we are using Whit O'Brien's to help us beef up our application, review the budget documents. And then we also had a pretty thorough meeting with the Georgia EPD last week to kind of go over some questions that we had in that application. So it was one that was on our radar, but we're asking for their help this time around.
Kudos to you. Any other questions from council? Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this waste problem?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if you'd like to come forward and talk about this exciting opportunity, now's your chance. I see no one come forward, so I'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mayor. I make a motion that council adopt the resolution supporting an application for the Georgia Environmental Protection Division Recycling and Waste Diversion Grant and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Hypes and a second by Councilman Dorito. Any discussion? Let's waste no more time then. All those in favor, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. Well done. The next item is, oh, that was the item that I previously announced will be deferred. That's the True North 400 Community Improvement District Expansion. For those of you that may have come in late, that item will be heard on September 22nd, So the actual item we'll be taking up now is the ordinance for the budget amendment, jail operations. This is the second reading. The first reading of this item occurred during the August 25th, 2025 city council meeting. And Patrick, you once again have another ordinance to read.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this will be the second reading of an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia to adopt a fiscal year 2026 budget amendment for jail operations for certain funds of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, appropriating the amounts shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the item of revenue anticipation, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available.
Well read, sir. Mr. Lagerblum, I believe you have this one.
I don't know if I'll do as well, but we'll see if I can get close. Mayor and council, this is the second reading of this particular budget amendment that we had at the last meeting. I made a fairly lengthy presentation the last meeting. I want to make a couple additional comments tonight and then see where your questions might take us. If you recall, when we did this presentation in work session, we kind of laid out two different paths we could go down. One that would be to get it open for Alpharetta. The second was to get it open and utilize it in more of a regional capacity. The real difference was the difference in the staffing level, whether or not we went with hiring 15 people off the bat or whether we went to what we anticipated the need would be at about 23 people. So what I highlight the fact that what's before you tonight in the form of a budget amendment is that is the first of those two options. It's the 15 that we believe we need to get it open for Alpharetta to transport people to it for processing and booking and bonding and all that good, good stuff. Because we're talking in narrow scope of it just impacting Alpharetta, there's not a lot of offsetting revenues that are in this budget amendment. There's simply just one that we think deals with some revenue to be generated in processing of bond surcharges on cash bonds. So the whole idea and the whole discussion about what might we get from other user cities and what might the sheriff pay us for, you know, housing people every night, what other revenue streams might we share in with other cities based upon doing cash bonds for, for them? All of those other revenues that started to bring somewhat bigger number down really aren't part of what we're discussing tonight. This is really just focusing us on getting it open for the city of Alpharetta. Those numbers haven't changed. The one additional study that we did since the last meeting that we were all here together and discussed was, we had the question of what would it take to legitimately start a transport division in the police department and say that number six or eight people was thrown out? Say, what if we just went and hired eight people, hired six people and got them equipped with the right transport vehicles? Could we start just a transport if we were to have a relationship with a different, either county jail, if we could find one, or we all mentioned the word Smyrna because we know they have a local municipal jail? We did, the finance department, along with the police department, went through the effort of legitimizing that study. So it would be more than just a wild guess and said, what, you know, based upon the formulas that we use and how we account for costing people and costing equipment and costing capital needs as well as maintenance and operating expenses as well as personnel expenses. The punchline is that that costs about a million dollars. And it was fluctuated between 994 and 1.1 over five years. So if you smooth that number out for conversation purposes, it's easy to say that we could start that level of a transport if, if that was the policy direction of the city council for about a million bucks. So you start to talk about what's then the delta and the difference in the budget documents that we have, that we've provided. We believe the first year expansion budget, first year total budget if, for us to get it up operating is in that $2.2 million range. So we're, you know, the delta there between 2.2 and starting a transport group, if that's the direction we wanted to go and utilize somebody else's jail. Now, this doesn't account for costing the down, for downtime, and it doesn't account for costing lost of fines and forfeitures in our court. And it doesn't, it doesn't account for any of those. It's just simply a operations of the jail versus forming a transport unit. The delta is about a million to a million one between doing the other. And I think I could, and, and if you'd like me to, I think I could argue why the investment in opening our jail is worth that delta and what the services lost to our community are by, by just forming something like a transport unit. I don't, I don't believe Alpharetta would be as well served, and that certainly wouldn't be the recommendation I would come to you with. But we can have that discussion if you would like. Taking it one step further, if we choose to get into business with the other cities, if an IGA makes sense with them, and if it makes sense for, has to make sense for us, right? It has to make sense for us both financially and operationally, as well as the other municipalities, there will be another budget amendment coming if we believe, like we went into this study believing that we probably need some additional staff to have the numbers increase for jail oversight, to have oversee a larger population. We may very well get this open by November the 1st and realize that that number based upon the first 15 that we hire, that number's not 23. That number might be lower than that. I don't anticipate it to be higher than that, but it, it may not be a full 23. We might, might find these 15, could add an additional 10 inmates and not compromise the safety of the facility. So you have another bite at that apple. So I'm not asking you to make that decision tonight. You would make those budget amendment decisions in conjunction with an IGA as we start to bring customers onboard. But we are on track to meet that deadline that we committed to aspiring to, which was November the 1st, to have the facility back open and functioning. We have put a lot of processes in motion in the police department, none of them final because it always requires action of the city council before we can be committed to anything. If you all approve this tonight at second reading, then the wheels will really go into motion for us to get to that November the 1st date because then we will have made amendments to the budget, will have available funding to work forward with the project, and we will do our darndest to, to get it back open. It is closed today, so the sheriff did move out. I appreciate the fact that not only did he move out, I was kind of concerned at the condition that it might have been left in because, you know, it's a lot easier to just get out in the middle of the night and leave it, let us figure it out. That was not the sheriff's tactic at all. The sheriff sent up moving crews during the day. It was very orderly. It was very, it was very much procedure and process oriented. He even sent in a deep cleaning crew that came after everything was gone. So if you were to go to the jail today, our facility was left having been deep cleaned with the right chemicals and all to make sure that it's a non-hazardous environment and that we're really starting from more of a place of working towards reopening it than I even thought we were going to. So again, no, we have a great working relationship and he had to do what he had to do, and now I think we have to do what we have to do, but both parties have been working well together. So it's not as though this has turned adversarial by any means. And I don't think it, it would be moving forward as we continue to work with the sheriff about transporting the inmates as well as becoming just whatever type of housing we want to become for him with extra beds that we might have. I'll stop there and say the numbers haven't changed, just so I can put them on the record. The operational cost detail, this funding request is in the amount of $1,573,887 operational impact, offset by additional revenues, $26,924. It would hire 15 people to open the jail, provide for the maintenance and operating expenses as well as the operational capital, and we would anticipate an opening date of November 1st. Any future, again, any future needs for identifying funding or entering into agreements with cities would all come back to you in different items, different action items in the future. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Mr. Lagerblum, have you received any other contact from our neighbors?
All of them. Yes. And in fact, I wanted to make sure that this was presented in the context in which it was presented so that there was no, so that we were all clear with each other, that this was a toned down version of what we presented the first time that we came forward, thinking that we were going to maybe start with having customers. We're, I believe we're prepared for that. I believe that, I'll, I'll just say it, they, they all want to know when we can have this IGA done so they can present it to their city councils for approval. So I think everybody is realizing that this is the one opportunity to have in North Fulton County that is currently built, that could currently be opened by November the 1st, and that's a very attractive thing for the city. So yes, I've, I've heard from all of them.
I just wanted to check, and just so you know, and council will know, I actually received a call from Mayor Bradbury in Johns Creek last week, and he specifically was just curious to know about what was going on, what the, and I relayed the conversation that we had, that our intention is to open it up for us and continue to pursue an agreement that would serve all of us. And so, but I wanted you all to be aware that at least that mayor reached out to me to make sure that we were all on the same page. Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you. For the public's sake, you said all of them. Does that include Sandy Springs?
You know, I've had conversations with Sandy Springs. I haven't heard from them recently, but that doesn't eliminate that our chief has talked to Chief DeSimone in Sandy Springs. And it would be advantageous for Sandy Springs, at least initially, if we get into the business, which I believe we will, of housing for others, that a portion of their city transport to Alpharetta versus everybody going to Smyrna. And it may not be an all or nothing for either location. It may benefit them to be in both locations. Of course, our business model may be different than Smyrna's. And as such, they would just have to weigh what type of business agreement they want to enter into.
So when you say all of them, you're speaking of Johns Creek, Roswell, Milton?
Correct.
And, okay.
All of these numbers, when we talked about building it to service the region, included revenues anticipated for the four cities plus half of Sandy Springs because we just didn't know what to pick.
I see. And also, you mentioned to begin with, it would be 15 people, and that includes a night shift. How would those numbers be broken down?
Yeah, those 15 people would include all of those, would include the necessary leadership for the detention facility itself, as well as comparable shifts to that which we operate in the police department. So it would operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It would be capable of holding either on a short term or a medium term basis. Probation holes would be no problem, serving time would be no problem. It would function as a municipal jail, which is very much in line with the way it functioned in the early 90s and the way the sheriff was functioning it for us. So we'd be able to do everything we need on a 24-hour basis with that initial contingent of people.
And I'm just curious, have you, have you come up with a contingency plan if there's a, some type of outbreak or, or whatever in the middle of the night and the numbers of guards are down? I know the police station's right next door, but have you all discussed some strategies there?
Yeah, I mean, you can, we kind of have to pick the right staffing level with relief factor that gets us the coverage. You could always, and I'll probably use a bad analogy here, you could always build the parking lot for Easter Sunday just to make sure that you don't ever have that problem. But you're right, you kind of answered the question in that there is always a fully staffed shift that is working of capable law enforcement professionals. Worst case scenario is, we'll have a contingency call-in plan, which would be no different than if we had eight people working in the middle of the night in the police side and needed 14. There's a recall provision that is easy to execute if it needs to be executed. I would imagine this would be very similar in the jail itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Dorito? Councilman Dorito.
Thank you, Mayor Gilvin. Chris, a question on the, the, I guess, one option of the transport, hiring the transport people, you referred to them as. You projected the cost of 1 million, 1.1 million if we were to go down that path. Is that an annualized number or just for the current fiscal year if we were to do that for fiscal year 2026?
That would be an annualized number because it was, it was moved over five years. So, you know, it was less than six figures in the first short fiscal year, but then enough that it, it averaged to about a million a year for the first five years.
Would it be anticipated that those individuals would be fully sworn police officers filling those roles?
I would think we would, if we were to do, we would want that. And the reason I say that is because if they're going to be transport, transporting, quote, prisoners, there's two certifications, as I understand it in Georgia, that they can hold to be able to legitimately do that. Jailer is not one of them. So we would either have them certified as corrections officers, which would really not do us any double duty if we ever needed them to. So it would seem as though the best certification would be a law enforcement certification because then at least if they weren't transporting, they could help us in a different capacity. So it's a long way to answer your question and say yes.
Okay. And just one more question regarding the period of time between the jail being turned over to the city now to when this facility's up and operational November 1st. Is there a plan for the gap period of how we would handle any sort of arrest or processing of arrests?
Yeah, and the plan's being executed now, so that, that plan is in motion. Anything that would have gone to Rice Street or gone to the Fulton County Jail prior to the closing of the Alpharetta Annex is continuing to go to the Fulton County Jail at Rice Street. Those charges, which would be local charges, we've worked with our judges and our court to make sure that they're aware that this is, this is how we're going to do it for the next 60 days. We're not, not making double negative there. We continue to make criminal charges, just those that would have traditionally been a transport in a bond process are being released on a citation. So hopefully will appear in court, and we'll use other mechanisms if they don't, and the judges know for the time being just not to revoke any probations.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lagerblum. I appreciate all your efforts and the public safety team. All those in favor of, oh, do we have a public comment card? I almost forgot.
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, anyone would like to come forward and speak about this budget amendment for the jail, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd offer a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance, budget amendment, jail operations as presented again this evening.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel and a second by Councilman Mitchell in discussion. Councilman Hypes?
When we took this up last time, we had in front of us a vote for 1.6 million to zero for this fiscal year and for the next fiscal year, 2.3 million and change to zero. And I think there was recognition amongst members of council that that wasn't the true numbers that we were trying to resolve in terms of the budget impact of what this jail will have on the city. And I just want to commend, you know, starting with City Administrator Lagerblum for getting folks together to work on one of those missing numbers, which is the cost to transport because it's really the difference between those numbers is what we need to focus on in terms of the value proposition for opening this jail. And I thank you for getting a team together. I thank Chief Lindgren, Assistant City Administrator John Robinson, in getting together and addressing and working through those issues about what is the true cost and the true value proposition of this jail so that right now, instead of a $2.3 million annualized proposition, we're down to a $1.3 million proposition without having factored in the revenues to offset the expense of the jail. And I have become far more comfortable with what I believe the net cost of operating the jail after revenues will be than I was when we had that sheet of paper in front of us the last time this came before us. And so this is, this is my way of saying thank you to Chief and to Mr. Lagerblum for, you know, getting me comfortable with what this vote is about and how, how we can represent to the city that we're being really good stewards of their tax dollars at the same time enhancing our public safety with this jail. So I very much appreciate it.
And yet, Councilman Brady?
Well, the last meeting, unfortunately, I was at jury duty, but I wanted to be able to have a chance to make some comment because I was-
What was the net cost? Because they paid you what, 10 bucks?
$25 a day is, but I do want to, I listened in and listened and back to it, and I got to say, I was so proud of this council because one thing about a jail, it's just the fundamental core of a good community is to have the most quality infrastructure. I believe every little town, even back from John Wayne days of going to the old west, a jail was part of it, it was just at the core. And we didn't have really this, this came, this issue came to us, right, with Fulton County. We know they kind of have their issues with their jail and the sizing of that. And the way we handled it, I think it was, it was great from a community that we, fundamentally, we need this. And there's a priority items of how we spend our money and what that is and what those expenses are, but this is a core. In that moment, whether you're a family member or anyone in our community and you have to go to the jail, that experience versus the other experiences in other places is so dramatic. And, you know, whether it's our kids, family members, or anyone else, that is the core of the community, kind of protect that. The other part of that was kind of the, the serious, the expense of it, right? The expense that we kind of take on and, you know, flattening that out a little bit and get more granularity, just really happy to kind of see that. But the overall totality is that when you look at the overall budget, those are, and we're, we're spending a lot of time creating kind of efficiencies and other things where we pull those things. So when these priority items come up, we're able to handle them without maybe a full burden. And just as a reminder, we also did this as a council where we pulled levers and created revenue of $850,000 that came in that wasn't there last year. These are the ups and downs that we will find throughout the entire budget that will ultimately get us into a really good place. Our decision's going to be on now is more of the non-priority items that might be coming up, that people might have an affinity for, that really from a priority, this takes a higher kind of stake in what we want to have our economic, you know, platforms about. So those are the efficiencies I kind of see us talking about in the future where we might little small little cuts, right, surgical little cuts here and there that will basically flatten this out. And those will be the things I think we'll be talking about over the year that will get us into a net neutral of this expense today. So I just wanted to say thank you to the council for really kind of supporting it, and I fully believe in the jail. So thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Dorito.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Eric Wood, Councilman Brady just mentioned, but I agree with everything he said. Just want to add some additional comments. I also want to thank our City Administrator Lagerblum, Assistant City Administrator Robinson, and also Chief Lindgren. I know a lot of effort's gone behind it. It's also like to thank our mayor and this council because there's been a lot of involvement outside of like public meetings here and discussing this and trying to make the right decision for our city. As I said in the last, the first reading of this budget amendment request, there's a lot of reasons why we should, we should do this. It's unfortunate that we're under the gun, so to speak, because Fulton County decided to pull the plug on operating the jail pretty quickly, and it put this city in a position to have to quickly make the right decision, the appropriations of monies and what have you to, to operate this jail back under the city of Alpharetta authority. But it's the right thing to do, as, as mentioned by Councilman Brady already. I do want to remind our residents that if we were to go through the transport of prisoners down at Rice Street, or even if we utilize the transport, hiring transport people or additional officers to the, basically, transport folks, I don't think that's the most efficient, efficient way to adjudicate cases in the city of Alpharetta, particularly for folks that maybe made a first-time mistake or what have you. We want to be as compassionate as possible but enforce the laws of our city. We would also lose, as was already mentioned, I think what Chris mentioned already, that fines and forfeitures would shift to other jurisdictions and not come into the city coffers as far as a revenue item to offset these costs here in the city of Alpharetta. And the other thing that I think is important to keep in mind is that the judges that would adjudicate these cases would not be our city judges, but it would be, I believe, state judges if we were to transport, decide to transport prisoners down at Rice Street as far as utilizing that option. I really believe, I know, I know this city council and our city professional staff is going to do everything in our power to effectuate these intergovernmental agreements to offset the cost of the Alpharetta city taxpayer. I have no doubt that that's going to happen. It'll take a little time, but, you know, and some of the folks and our fellow elected officials on the cities I've spoken to at different functions I've been at, they've always been very positive in being part of this. So as the mayor already talked about, he's already kind of speaking to other mayors to try to effectuate for these things to happen. And so in closing, this is the right thing to do for our city. It's a, it's, it can be viewed by our taxpayers as a costly investment, but as already mentioned, not only today of the last meeting, and the mayor was very eloquent in his position on, and why we need to do this as the city of Alpharetta, and he's very right, 100% right. This is, this is the function we, we need to provide to our citizens here in Alpharetta, or we risk creating unintentionally a catch-and-release program here in Alpharetta that we don't want to see happen, which undermines the ability for us to sustain a very high level of upholding the laws and regulations of our city.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly, and it does pass unanimously. So we'll move on to our next business item, which is PH-25-13 Unified Development Code text amendments, vertiport, second reading. The first reading of this item occurred during the August 25th, 2025 city council meeting. Patrick, we're keeping you busy this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, this is the second reading of an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia to amend Articles One and Two of the Unified Development Code of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia to add definitions related to a vertiport, to assign vertiport as a permitted and conditional use in certain zoning districts, to repeal conflicting ordinances, and for other purposes. I felt really good about that one, thank you.
Director Cook, I believe you have this item.
Mayor and council, there's only one change since the first reading. We had discussed that we would make all of the zoning districts make it to where it was, had to be approved as a master plan amendment or it had to be approved as conditional use. So that's the only change since the first reading.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any questions for Director Cook on this item? Well done, thank you very much. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, anyone wants to speak on the definition of vertiport, now's your chance. I don't see anyone running forward, so I'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd offer a motion this evening to approve PH-25-13 Unified Development Code text amendments of vertiport as presented again this evening.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel and a second by Councilman Hypes. Any discussion? I don't see any hands raised, so I'll call for a vote. Pardon? All those in favor of the item, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. Next item is the ordinance for alcohol ordinance text amendments, second reading. Once again, the first reading of this item occurred during the August 25th, 2025 city council meeting. Patrick, one last reading.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is the second reading of an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia to amend Chapter Four of the Code of the City of Alpharetta, referred to as the alcohol ordinance to provide for effective dates and for other purposes.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Shapiro, I believe you have this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So this item tonight before you, this is, as the city attorney mentioned, the second reading. It did go, come before you guys as a work session item and was approved at first reading during the last city council meeting. Since the first reading, we did have just a couple of few minor changes that were also described in your staff report. We added the text 2417E to linear, to create an option for council to, by variance, waive a distance requirement, say from one package store to another if the council so believed that there needed to be an alcohol package store within close relation to each other. We also left out inadvertently some additional criteria that carried over from the previous 417 section, and then we also removed any references to 417A since we did make some significant changes to the order of this ordinance. 417A no longer applied to this section, so we just changed it to Chapter Four in general. But other than that, I am here if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions from Ms. Shapiro? Well done, thank you very much.
And we have no public comment cards for this item.
However, if you're just sitting out there wanting to comment on this item, now's your chance to do so. I see no one come forward, so I'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd offer a motion this evening to approve the ordinance of alcohol ordinance text amendments with the changes presented this evening by Ms. Shapiro.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel and a second by Councilman Brady. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it passes unanimously. So that will end the business portion of tonight's meeting. We do have public comment available if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
I have not received any this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Nor do I see anyone come forward, so we'll close public comment. Do we have any reports this evening? Seeing none, do we, I believe we are requiring an executive session. Is that correct, Mr. Lagerblum?
That is correct. One topic tonight, litigation.
Thank you very much for that. So I do need a motion and a vote to, to recess this meeting into the executive session. So moved. Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim, second by Councilman Brady. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote yes. And it is unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, we shall return shortly. Ladies and gentlemen, we shall return shortly.